... Center and we're pretty jazzed. And fingers crossed, in two years when we do this, all the cameras and the sound will just be wired into the room. Um, we will not be piecing together all of these bits of equipment, but we're glad that we can and make it work. Um, so anyway, good evening, everybody. My name is Rachel Crocker and I am the Director here at the Albany County Public Library. We say that our mission is to build meaningful connections, to inspire growth, to cultivate curiosity, and to enhance community. And we think partnering with the League of Women Voters to host these candidate forums is a pretty great way to do all of those things. We are so glad to be welcoming all of you that are here in this room, joining us. We're also glad to be able to welcome the people who are joining us online. It's a reminder, we are streaming this live and then we will also have these videos posted on the library website and on the League of Women Voters website. So tell your friends, if they couldn't come, send them to the video to watch it later as they prepare to vote. Candidates, thank you for joining us. Thank you for running. Thank you for serving our community in that way. As a reminder, again, we're recording, so mics really matter because that's the only way the online people hear. The upside is, as you can tell, as long as you're in the general direction of the mic, we should be good to go. So just don't talk away from the mic and we'll make sure that the people online can hear you. Um, and as I said, actually, come, visit us on October 5th. I didn't tell you what the party was. We'll have a party in this room. We are bidding it farewell with a mural from Fabian Hernandez. So Fabian is actually going to mural that wall, but the community can help paint it. And then we are also going to allow the community to mural this wall, which will then just be covered up. So the mural will stay behind, will stay there forever, or until somebody in 40 years decides to take down that wall. Um, well, after I am gone, I promise. But we will invite the community to leave their mark on this room as we sort of enter new phase. So we'd love for you to join us. It is, oh, it's, thank you, all the important details. It is from 10 to 4:00. So really, anytime on that Saturday swing by. If you want to, if, you know, if you're into pronghorn costumes, come at like 10:00. And if you're into basketball players, maybe come about 1:00. We'll have some guests and we'll have a lot of information out in the community in the coming weeks. So, thank you for indulging my excitement for this new library adventure. Thank you, candidates. We're going to hand it off to Lynn for an intro.
Boy, I've been waiting for more news about this remodel and now we have it. I guess we'll all see each other here October 5th. I want to thank Rachel and Shane, our technology guru, for making it possible for us to put this on and on in so many places and to livestream. Thank you very much. Yes, the candidates, what would we do if they weren't here, right? And they're all here. So congratulations and thank you. It's not easy these days to run, right? You could be flailed alive, I guess, but not here. Thank you also to the audience for all coming out when you could have stayed at home in your jammies and watched online. But you can go back and view this. And if you missed last week's forum, it was Laramie Rivers and the Hospital Board. Maybe not something everybody thinks they want to know about, but believe me, it was a very interesting night. So I would recommend going back and catching some of the information. And I would vote, both candidates were more than capable. Anyway, current office holders, I've seen a couple, let me introduce them to you. So anybody who's running for an office, is in an elective office, or maybe even an elected board or commission, could you come up here to the front so that our viewing audience could meet you briefly? Come on, there we go.
Hello, I'm Chelsea Matthews and I am your current county assessor.
I'm Sally King, I'm your current county coroner.
Howdy, I'm Tracy Fletcher, the county treasurer. And disregard, don't disregard, but the letters on your property tax just went out, so.
That's an easy act to follow. I'm Nancy Sindelar, I'm Chair of the Laramie Traffic Safety Commission.
Good evening, I'm Pete Gosar on the Albany County Commission.
Well, yes, good idea. It's always interesting, the mix of city civic workers that we get. Timekeepers. Last time I said what they did, but I forgot to say what their names are. So let me introduce them first by their names. The young man here in the gray sweater, our t-shirt, who just stood up a little bit is Matthew Link. He's one of our members. He'll take over at the halfway mark. And the woman sitting at the far end is Jamie Eagle. She's holding up a sign. Now that sign says 60 seconds and we count down here. So the max you're going to have is 90 seconds. And when you see stop or 30 seconds, start winding down.
Sure.
Okay, any questions about that? You may have noticed there are white pads on the chairs either next to you or maybe even under you. Those are for your questions. And we hope that you will ask a lot of questions because we assume you came because you're really interested and you have personal things to ask our candidates. I gave this to some of you, I still have a few copies, I'll put them over here on the table. In 2022, it was the sheriff's supporters who first asked me for this. Did I have a list of questions that have ever been asked of a sheriff? He was going to go on and answer them all on a website somewhere. Well, I had those questions. And here they are in a much more organized way. One sheet is for the senate candidates and the other is for the county commission. And at the top of each sheet, you will see the questions we asked them in the voter guide in the primary. And the next set is shorter and those are the ones we're asking them now for the general election. And the rest of the questions, I think they're still pertinent and they come from previous election cycles, probably back to 2018 is as far as I go. Anyway, you can have one of these copies. I'm going to let the moderator talk about this, but you might want to pick up a copy of the pro con for the constitutional amendment. Let's see what else. Okay, so Rachel went through all the places you can view tonight's forum and the three nights that are coming. We have five nights, Thursday nights of forums. But someone told me that his supporters couldn't find us. So my suggestion is just go to the front page of the library and they have a big mark right there that will take you to the forums, to the videos, to everything you'd ever want. Don't try to search in YouTube, that's apparently fruitless. And just another thing, you know, if you like a handout or some piece of information you find either in the library or our sites, you can always download those things and copy them. But if anybody wants a copy of anything, just send us an email. It's laramie@Wyominglvw.com, right? Dot org is our website, dot com. Org, sorry, I got them mixed up. And we have news about the, Katie will give us the news about the voter guide and it's coming up. All right, so let me introduce Margaret Brown. And I told Margaret I was going to tell you all some things that maybe you don't know about Margaret. You know, I've come to Margaret's circle sort of late in life. And I'll just read what I wrote about her. I said, "It's my great privilege to know Margaret Brown, E. Anderson. She serves many good causes, is a devoted Wyoming daughter from Goshen County, and she has been a League member both in Rollins and Laramie for a long, long time. Her sisters are also a force of natures and they too are League members, one in Gillette and one in Cheyenne. Margaret described herself on her LinkedIn page as an independent fundraising professional and that she is. But those of us who are a little newer to the League, we think of her as our politically savvy guide to all things legislature." So if you ever have a question, you know where to go to. Margaret served in the legislature when Wyoming had what were called multi-candidate districts. So she represented Rollins from 1982 and 1984. And she wasn't quite sure, so I looked it up today. In those years, so from, I guess it would have been 1982 to 1992, 1990, with those multiple representative districts, you had more women and Democrats in the legislature than ever before or ever since. And about the women, there were two in the senate during each one of those cycles, but there were 20 and 19 women in the house. And Margaret was in there in the house both cycles. All right, so she knows of what she speaks. And so I'm just saying that, to quote Margaret, "Voters felt comfortable having a male and a female representing one district." And that was the era when, don't tell them I said this, but Charlie Scott was young and dapper. I've seen a picture. All right, well, with that, I'll introduce Margaret Brown, she's tonight's moderator.
Good evening, so glad to see you all. We have candidates tonight, none of whom have served in the office that they're running for. So we don't have the possibility of incumbents versus folks who haven't served there. So everybody's going to, everybody's on a fairly even playing field here, I think, and will give their opinions and maybe don't have as much knowledge or information as somebody might after they've served. So we'll all work through this together. The timekeeper will give folks 90 seconds. And what I want to do, usually we say, "Tell us about yourself," but what I want to do is have you tell us something specific. And what I would suggest as that we have for our topic is, and county folks can say county and Mike and Gary can talk about the state. Given the challenges that inflation is presenting, what do you see as the most urgent change needed for operations of the county or the state?
Can you read that one more time?
I can. Given the challenges that inflation is presenting, or any other challenges that you would like to talk about, what would you see, what's the most urgent change needed for operations, county operations if, for Thad and Brian, or for the state, what should the state be doing differently to deal with the conditions that we're facing?
Where do you want them to start?
Well, I think, let's start with Mike, since he's right here. Poor guy.
Yeah, so I'm not going to have a few minutes to think about the answer. Yeah, if we're talking about inflation, I'm not sure what the state has, how much impact the state can have on inflation, but being prepared budget-wise is important. Our state has the largest reserve fund compared to the size of our budget in the country by far. And we added a billion dollars, almost a billion dollars this last session. That makes us, that puts us in a pretty strong position in terms of being able to handle any inflationary pressures that come. And, yeah, I don't think I'm going to use all my time because...
You don't have to.
Yeah, there we go. Yeah, I think it's an issue that the state should, the legislature will have to deal with. But there's every indication that inflation could well be under control by the time that either of us take office. So we'll see.
Thank you. Gary?
Thank you, Margaret. First of all, thank you for letting us be here tonight. This is a great opportunity and really appreciate everybody being here this evening. You know, the number one thing that I think we've got to accomplish in the state legislature and in particular the senate is we've got to bring people together. Right now, there's too much bickering and fighting over there. And until we can bring people together, have civility in the process, doesn't mean we don't have robust debates and disagreements, but we don't need to be calling each other names and putting labels on folks. So the first thing we've got to do is bring people together. As it relates to inflation, we've got to take a hard look at the budget and understand where our income's coming from, which, you know, the vast majority of our income comes from, you know, personal property tax, which is an issue I'm sure we're going to get to later on taxes. And how do we deal with that? But also our mineral industry and how we promote and take care of our mineral industry so we can have good, clean energy in the state of Wyoming and yet provide the taxes that we can do things like the $2.5 million renovation to this facility. So we need to continue to look at our budget. We need to be very, very strong on the budgeting process and make sure that we're spending the people's money wisely because inflation has ate away at the spending power of the money that we've had. But most importantly, we've got to find a way to work together in the senate and also work with the House to make sure we're working together as one team for the betterment of all the folks in Wyoming.
Thank you, Gary. Thad?
Good evening. The county operates more on a shoestring budget than the state has the ability to muster. I think with inflation, your dollar buys less and we need to make sure that the money's actually being spent or not spent if we think the inflationary period's going to go down. Take for instance, the renovation here. That $2.5 million isn't going to buy as much renovation in a higher inflationary period than say, six years ago, five years ago. So we, the county needs to take a hard look and make sure that they're not expending more money than what we have coming in. And we don't want to necessarily squeeze the residents in inflationary period either because they're going to be coping with the dollar not stretching as far in Laramie and Albany County in particular. It's already hard to do that. We have a higher cost of living here and so we need to bear that in mind. So it's going to have to be very balanced and reasonable and certainly not an abrupt change. Thank you.
Thanks. Brian, can you hear us?
Yes, I sure can. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thanks.
Okay, yeah, great. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, thank you to the Albany County Library. It's good to see you, Margaret, even if I'm virtual. I'm Brian Harrington, I'm running for county commission. And I would say the most urgent thing that I think, you know, I think, I guess, I think as we navigate this situation, I have been successful as an elected official in navigating this because really, a lot of this rise in inflation and rise in costs began post-pandemic and even during the pandemic. And we've been successful in navigating that at the city. That is an effort I would like to take to the county. And I think largely, we have been successful by working together. I think the city and the county cooperating, working in one direction, that has meant that the tax dollars go further. And I think that will be meaningful in the years to come. Whether we get inflation under control or not in the coming months, the prices are already up. And I think you see that, folks are certainly seeing that at the grocery store. You know, I've got two young kids in childcare. Everything costs more now than it did a few years ago. And I think we're seeing an increase in our use of social service nonprofits locally, whether that be the Epson Center, Interfaith, the Soup Kitchen, all of those are seeing an increase. And so I would like to continue supporting those through our community partner program. I think that would be a significant way to help shore up the budgets of those nonprofits that are doing the work that government cannot do. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Well, I was going to jump right into questions and tell you folks, go read the information on Vote 411 or in the newspaper or a variety of other places. But I got a question that says, "We need to know about these people and ask them to say something about themselves and maybe their connections to Laramie and Albany County." Because you haven't gone and read all that, apparently. So we'll back up and we'll start with that, we'll second with that. And so...
90 seconds?
Sixty. Short and sweet. So start with Gary.
Thank you.
Say something about yourself and your connection to Albany and Laramie County, Albany County and Laramie.
I'm a Wyoming native. I was born in Rollins, came down here to go to school and pretty much been here ever since. I've been in the banking career for 43 years. In Laramie, most of it, bounced around the state a little bit when I was younger, kind of moving up the chain. We ended up with several really, really good friends, starting what was Wyoming State Bank, which is now FMBO here in town, and became the second largest bank in Wyoming before we sold it. Went to school at the University of Wyoming and graduated with a degree in finance, have a family. Very, very proud of my family, got four kids, all went through the school system here. And so far, all of them are doing really, really well. And one left in high school. And like I say, I just, Laramie's the best place in the world to live and I'm very proud to be here.
Thad?
Since 2003, I've owned and operated Wyoming State Safe and Lock and I know a lot of you either as customers or acquaintances. I have two young daughters in the community. My wife's, actually, my daughters are third-generation Laramieites. And right now, we're adding on to our house. We plan to live here the rest of our lives and that's where I'm definitely finding out what the inflation prices are running right now. And how hard it is to find a contractor and what people are facing here in town for building prices and where they're going to live. So, yeah, definitely want to make this our forever home. So that's it for me. Oh, well, I have a degree in criminal justice from the University of Wyoming. I learned how to fly and have a degree in aviation from Casper College. I'm a ham radio operator and like to dink around with that kind of thing. I love dealing with mechanical stuff, slot machines and payphones and that kind of thing.
Okay. Brian?
Thank you. My name is Brian Harrington, I'm running for county commissioner. I grew up in northern Wyoming, in the middle of the Big Horn Basin, and moved down to Laramie in 2010. I was fortunate to almost immediately, you know, I saw a band that I loved the first day I was here, I got a job at the University of Wyoming Art Museum and shortly after I met my wife. And that kept me here. In the spring of 2011, I started my first business and then in 2019, I started my second. And in 2018, I ran for a seat on the city council and was successful and have spent the last two years as the mayor of the city of Laramie, a job that I've been really honored to hold. And I think in that job, we have spent quite a bit of our time working to make building, housing easier to Mr. Hofspoyt. And to find ways to really help folks who could use a hand and then figure out a way to really increase building and address affordable housing. Thank you. Yeah. Jamie, if you hold it towards this camera, I can see it. Thank you.
Okay. Good. Mike?
Excuse me. In 2008, my daughter and son-in-law, after researching small cities and towns all across the country, chose to move to Laramie. And we had been vacationing in the Rocky Mountain West for probably 10 years or so before that. So the impetus was started to think about moving this way and a variety of factors came together that allowed us to do that. And we moved here, my wife and I, in 2010. And, yeah, we moved from Baltimore, for folks that want to know, Maryland, Baltimore area. And, yeah, we love it here. Recently, I'm not going to have time, community means so much. And there are two very specific examples of how the community supported me and my wife at different times. And I hope I get to talk about them.
Okay. Okay, hopefully now you know something about our candidates that you didn't know before. I've got about three questions here, so let's jump right to the proposed constitutional amendment and the change that that would possibly make with our property tax amounts and not collections so much as the amounts. And so the questions, we'll just, we'll start out generally. What are your thoughts on the proposed constitutional amendment to create a separate tier for residential property tax, which is now lumped in with commercial and a bunch of other things, not minerals, basically? So it would, so the proposed constitutional amendment, and there are some pages about it over there, would allow the legislature to set a separate tier for residential property tax, residential property to be taxed at some different rate. It's the best explanation I have right now. Thad, start with you.
I believe that's probably the fairest approach for residents to at least create a differentiation and allow the legislature to operate and hold it independently. And that's all I've got for the county level until it's an issue that the county actually has to deal with because they are going to have to parse the issue if it does become law. So I think it would be a fairer point for property owners to have the benefits or at least a category of their own to seek the separation.
Okay. Brian?
Thank you. I am still sorting this out in my mind, but I think where I'm at right now is a little bit concerned about this constitutional amendment. And I would say largely that is because I'm not sure what its effect in practice would be. And I say that because I worry that splitting residential from commercial may have the effect of either inflating the cost for commercial, which I don't believe Albany County really has the ability to absorb. And the other option is that it increases or decreases collections for residential. And I, again, don't know if Albany County can absorb those, you know, sort of revenue decreases. And so I think largely, I'm not particularly favorable to this. I mean, I think, I can see where it's coming from and I think it may be well-intentioned, certainly well-intentioned. But I worry because I think I just, I fear that it puts us in a spot where we can't, you know, fund the services people have come to expect.
Okay. Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I guess I worry about the legislature being able to work together to, you know, produce bills that will take advantage of this, that are good for all of Wyoming. Our communities rely heavily on the property tax and senior citizens rely heavily on the services that those property taxes pay for. But that said, I'm not opposed to the amendment. I would hope that good things come out of it. We need, we definitely need targeted relief for certain folks in Wyoming when it comes to property tax. But if they are going to, if the legislature in its current makeup decides to do something extreme, all our communities are going to suffer. And if we're going to give them that power, we better think about it pretty strongly, pretty carefully. And if they do pass a bill that will significantly harm the revenues that go to our communities, I think it's important that they find a way to offset those losses. Laramie is a great community and if we lose a significant part of our revenue, everyone in Laramie and everyone in Albany County is going to suffer for it. in Laramie and everyone in Albany County is gonna suffer for it.
Okay. Gary?
I'm for the constitutional amendment, and here's why. I think it's fair that we would split out residential property from commercial property. It's certainly a different animal than commercial property. Right now, the legislature does have the ability to change, you know, work on the property tax rates, but it's a broad spectrum. It would affect everything. This way, they can focus on one individual, specific thing, whether it's commercial or residential. They can look at it individually and have robust debate about what it should be. I have faith in the legislature that they'll do the right thing. I believe that we need to look at the tax situation on residential property. There were some great things done this year with looking at helping freeze the cap with the seniors, and as well as the limited 4% increase that's out there, but we need to continue to look at it more. We need to be very, very conscious, however, that remembering that property taxes pay for our schools, our counties, and our cities, and we cannot hurt them along the way. But yet, at the same time, we need to have debate on how we help those who need a little extra help in our community. So, and along with that goes the cities, counties, and schools, on how maybe they can tighten their belt a little bit, too, in order to make it work for everybody and that we're using the taxes that the citizens give us to the best of our ability.
Well, that makes me want to know more about what you all think about the tax situation in Wyoming. What would you suggest or what ideas might you have for changes, I'll say improvements, but different ways of paying for our government that we all want? We all want roads, we all want schools. We have property tax in Wyoming, and we have sales tax. And there were efforts last session to cut the property tax and raise the sales tax, and that didn't happen. But those are the kinds of issues that folks start talking about. And so, what's equal or equitable across the state is a big issue. If you go to, you all need to write this down, wyomingtaxfacts.org, that's hard to say. They do, this is a group that is, goes through the Community Foundation, and they do seminars, and their last one was on this exact issue. And you can pull it up, it's on YouTube, I guess, and you can watch it. And one of the things that they said was, I think it was the County Commissioners Association was showing, the 4% cap that was put in this last session, which is not a, they wrote it as an exemption, was how they did it. But the overall impact is about, they think, is about $300 million in the state, and about 150 million of that is from Teton County. So, that shows you how much property tax on expensive property, how much difference that makes. But about 100 million of that goes to the schools, goes to the state. Teton County is a recapture district for schools because of their high property tax. So, it, all of you said the right thing. You don't know what it's gonna happen and what it could do. But, so keep that in mind as we move along. Next question, if property taxes are cut, what would you do to generate additional revenue for our county taxing authorities? And so, this doesn't say whether they want only the commissioner candidates or the legislative candidates. I think you all could do that, because the legislature would have to change some things for the county to do, have different taxing authority, obviously. So, where am I? Must be time for Thad to start, right?
Can you repeat the question?
If property taxes are cut, which they already are being cut, what would you do to generate additional revenue for our county taxing authorities?
So, I guess my goal would be economic growth or start to develop that or try to develop more of that at this point. It's a long-term solution for the county, but it's also a slow start, so it's not gonna be an immediate fix. I don't suggest raising any sin tax or anything on cigarettes or gambling. I would like to see if the state legislature would agree that more wind tax might be available. If they're gonna put the turbines in, I wanna tax them, because it's gonna be an eyesore for everybody. And the citizens are ultimately the ones that are gonna pay the price for the green energy that may or may not be produced here in Albany County. It's something I'd like to look at. But the economic development, if we can get more people coming to Albany County and spending more dollars here, that can offset a deficiency.
Did I mess up and start with you twice?
That's fine.
You're tough. You can do it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, Brian?
Thank you. Yeah, I think, you know, one of the things that, I guess from the start, I would just say, I continue to support sort of targeted relief that both Albany County and the state of Wyoming have put forward and would work to make those easier to use. But I think if further reductions are the will of the voters or the will of the legislature, then backfilling those funds to local governments would be significant. I think that ought to be a piece of this conversation. And if not, then we need to be having a conversation about more tools for local toolboxes and other ways that the folks from Albany County can pay their own way. Because we know these services cost money, right? I mean, we know schools cost money, we know, you know, the real estate records, the sheriff's department, those things, they all cost money, and nobody wants to have less deputies or less records on their real property. And so, if we wanna continue the level of services, then we have to be having conversations about other ways in which the services of government can be paid for. And I don't think any of us really wanna go down the route of increased fees or that sort of thing. But I would like to see the legislature strongly consider backfilling some of those losses to help local governments out.
Okay. Mike?
As long as the word "tax" is a dirty word in the Wyoming legislature and in Wyoming in general, it's gonna be hard to find solutions. And raising sales tax is, you know, harder on lower and middle-income families, and I would oppose that locally, occasionally, when a limited time, one cent tax is added. I don't oppose that, but in general, raising the statewide sales tax, I would firmly oppose. The billionaires that are coming into Wyoming and buying up tons of property have the wherewithal to help us in this situation. But if anyone mentions the word "income tax," oop, I'm in trouble now, they're gonna be in, they're gonna be in trouble. But I would favor having a tax on the highest earners, top 1%, or we would have to look at exactly how that would look. But, you know, for whatever harm that does me as a candidate, I think that's an option.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay. Gary?
Number one, I'd be opposed to personal income tax. And Wyoming's not based on that, and we never have been, or nor should we ever be that way. But back to the tax situation, what we should do is look at how we work at this together, and meaning therefore, how we can reduce the property tax. It's loud and clear from the citizens of the state of Wyoming that it's been a burden on them, and how do we help those folks get the relief that they need to do that? And so, we need to find a way to do that. And that's by limiting that, I think there's one thing we can do on property taxes, too, that hadn't been talked about, and that is, we can cap it for those on fixed income and have a recapture to that. So, let's say you're 65 years old, you have it capped, the tax continues to accrue, then when you sell your home at some period in time, you repay the tax back to the counties or the cities. So, they get, they collect it. Yes, it's a little bit delayed, but after a little start with the delay, it'll come in on a regular basis. So, I think we do that. You know, look at some different ways. The other thing we need to do, I was in the banking industry for 40 years, and if we can all remember way back, 40 years ago in banking, you were really efficient if you had one employee for $1 million. When we got out of banking, you had one employee for about $18 million in assets. It changed. Because of the way interest margins changed, you had to become efficient, you had to adapt new technology, and we need to get that installed in government, too. Government needs to become more efficient using the tools that are available to us.
Okay. Okay, I'm, this next question doesn't say it, but I'm gonna say it. This is for the county commissioner candidates. So, Brian, you have to be first this time, because Thad's been first twice now.
Sure.
The county is considering projects for a new specific purpose tax. What projects do you think the county might need?
If I could wave my magic wand, you know, obviously, these conversations are a discussion between all of the governing bodies in Albany County, but, you know, I think there are plenty of needs. Some of those are pretty boring, but, you know, some of those are like road maintenance and that sort of thing. But, you know, I do think that there is an opportunity for some advancement at Pilot Hill. There's, you know, I continue to support the library, and I'm really excited about this $2.5 million for renovation, but I would like to see continuation of that expansion. You know, I think families are looking for places to take their kids constantly, and more space like that at a library would be significant. And then, you know, I think as we have these conversations about property tax cuts, there is gonna be a need for more of this money to go into the general function of government in things like road maintenance and that sort of thing.
Okay. Thad, you get to be second this time.
I thank you. Actually, get to write notes. The library, obviously, this building's aging. I would second Brian's opinion on that. And Albany County has a huge amount of road infrastructure that is marginal sometimes, and we do need to address that. We have a lot of rural residents, well, we don't have, we have a lot of rural residents that are scattered far and wide, and I think there's probably just as many tourists and vacationers that are using those roads and infrastructure support, wind turbine maintenance, that kinda thing, utility companies using those roads. We need to devote a little bit more time for the folks that are using the infrastructure for recreation. I'd like to see public health in a little better shape, either downtown or a different facility there, because that does service a very underserved part of the population. And then, we also need to worry about some of the mental health that we have going on in this community. So, that would need to be a conversation in another level and see just exactly how to pinpoint and best use those dollars.
Do you wanna answer, Gary?
You bet.
Okay. I was just gonna let the county commissioner candidates, but go ahead.
No, I, thank you.
Cause you live here.
Number one, I think the point of the legislature and what we need to do is recognize that the county is the arms and feet and hands of the state legislature. They implement a lot of the things that the state legislature passes, and so, we need to recognize and work very, very closely with the county and understand what the needs are. Now, some of the needs that I see that are really important, Thad talked about, we've gotta address mental health in this county and within the state. If we don't address it, the problems get worse. We see it every day, so we have to address mental health. We have to work with the downtown clinic to make sure we got really good rural healthcare. Iverson is a great facility, but we need to make sure we have good rural healthcare downtown clinic in Centennial and Rock River and out in Woods Landing, that we provide those emergency medical needs that they need, the emergency services, and that they get good quality healthcare. The other thing that I'm adamant about, we've gotta fix what I call the highway of death, and that's 287. We've gotta continue to build out the four-lane road on 287. I know it costs some money, but you can't pick up the paper, it seems like, and you don't read about somebody dying on 287. So, we need to finish the four-lane and encourage Colorado to do the same. But we need to help the county, remembering first and foremost, they're the hands, the arms, and the feet, and the legs, and the manpower that deliver a lot of what the state mandates. So, we need to listen very closely to the county's needs.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I agree with Gary, especially about 287. One of, you know, I mentioned at the very beginning about the legislature putting a billion dollars into the reserve fund. You know, that certainly, a portion of that would've helped with that problem, but it's not an issue that really concerned the legislature this time around. I hope it will, you know, the next session. And the mental health and rural health, I have ideas on that. I agree with Gary. We need to address how services are provided to the people in the furthest part of our county and our state. I think telehealth is a potential solution, but the way it is, the way it works now is fragmented and not connected to local providers. I've talked to folks that I think it would be possible to develop a telehealth system that allows a caller to reach the person, the provider closest to them, and get real local, regional information about whatever their symptoms or problems are. I would really love to see this type of solution investigated. And then, they would be able to send them to the closest possible help for their condition or...
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that's it.
Okay. We're gonna change topics here a little bit, and all of you are welcome to jump in on this. What specific steps will you work on to protect water in the county and the state? So, depending on which place you're coming from, so protect, work on protecting water in the county and the state. And let's start with...
Margaret?
Yes?
Do you want to do a town heat swap?
Oh, okay. Right now? Okay, do it.
I think, to be fair, I'm probably the one that should start.
Pardon? You're the one that's...
I don't think I've started it recently, so...
Okay. I thought I was, I screwed up by calling on Thad way too many times first.
It's fine.
He has broad shoulders, he can handle that. Okay, Mike, we'll start with you again, when they're ready. And after this, we're gonna talk about schools.
And once they're ready to start again, I need to hear the question one more time.
Okay. Are you ready? Okay. The question is, what specific steps will you work on to protect water in the county and the state?
Well, I love where we're at right now with Aqua for Protection, and I would wanna protect that protection. The legislature has, of late, been interested in sticking their nose into county and city business, and I would worry that the type of protections that we've brought forward here in Albany County are, could be at risk. So, in the legislature, I would work to push back against anything that would take away our right to protect our water. I love what they've done with gaining additional water rights. I don't, I'm not real excited about all the talk about, well, we could grow to three times our size in the next 10 years. I think that would significantly change the makeup of Laramie and what makes Laramie, you know, the wonderful place it is. Not that I'm opposed to growth, but we need to be really smart about it. So, you know, the bottom line of my answer is that locally, countywide, I think we're in a good place. Statewide, we need to continue to look at the future and protecting our water from states that would like to claim it, as has happened. And in the legislature, I would work against that also.
Okay. Gary?
You know, water is the lifeblood of Wyoming, and without water, we have nothing. You know, it's the reason the Oregon Trail came through here, the Overland Trail came through here, is we had water, right? They came up the Platte River, then crossed over to the Sweetwater and went on west from there. So, water's been a big part of Wyoming from the very beginning. the very beginning. And what we need to do, well, I'm not a water expert, what we need to do is make sure we protect our water. Wyoming generates a lot of water, but it gets taken by Colorado, California, Nevada, and we need to make sure that we're protecting our water. The first thing we need to do is make sure that our water laws are up to speed, which I know that the state has worked really hard on, but make sure that our water laws are up to speed, that our water rights are fully protected, and we need to invest anything we can in Wyoming. If we get challenged on our water rights, which we do daily, we have to combat that full speed ahead. It's a full-on battle. It's not take time to negotiate. We've got, we'll work it out over time, but we've got to step up and protect our water rights, because it is the lifeblood of Wyoming. And we need to continue to try to improve our water rights. If there's a way to pick up a water right upstream from where we're at, and it can be purchased reasonably or something, we need to try to pick that up as well. But water has to be protected, and I'll do everything in my power to protect the water rights in Wyoming.
Thank you. Thad, what can you do to protect water in the county?
At this time, I think the water in the county is adequately protected from at least the occupants over the top of the county from contaminating their own personal water sources, and just short of moving I-80 out of Telephone Canyon, I think we need to look at a very firm plan of action for spill contamination or abatement, should that happen. At the base of the canyon, there's several layer, rock layers that are directly accessible into the recharge zone. So I think we need to make sure that those plans are in place and that there is actually a physical protection there. We need to pay probably a little bit more attention to the recharge zone, which, through years of research, is very much publicly available in the hills. So we know where the water's actually getting into the aquifer. We know that it's pressurized, and it's got a positive, slight positive pressure, not artesian, but that kind of thing. Speaking outside the aquifer, though, we need to make sure that residents outside the protection zone have access to water. This is a huge county, and by talking about only the aquifer protection zone, we're ignoring a vast majority of the county itself. We have to think about our neighbors to the north that still need to enjoy county services and county protections.
Okay. Brian?
Yeah, thank you. This is a great question. I mean, I think at a basic level, the clean water that we enjoy is really essential to our economic health and our community's health. And, you know, I think the move from the majority of the current county commission to strengthen those protections, the regulatory protections on the Casper Aquifer Protection Zone, I think those are significant and worth implementing, the sort of follow-on regulations to that plan. And, you know, I think as an additional piece to that, as far as specifics are concerned, I think one of the easiest and maybe the first things we should do is really increase our monitor well network so that we understand more completely what is in, sort of like where those contaminants may be coming from. And then we will know if there is some sort of more acute contamination coming into the system. And then, in addition to that, we've been really successful in my time as an elected official in the city council at sort of expanding the city's holdings within water rights. To Gary's point, I mean, the city has purchased those senior water rights on the Laramie River, and I would continue working with the Conservation District as a county commissioner to ensure that that water is also adequately protected, so that even if we don't grow three times to Mike's point, we'll have water for hundreds of years. And I think that is something that I will be quite proud of with my time as an elected official, that my children and your children will have clean water.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I have a couple of questions here that say senate, so I'll ask those, and then we're going to go, then we're going to go to some school questions. So, Gary and Mike, it says, divisive social issues are taking more and more time and attention in our legislature instead of issues that really impact Wyoming, such as industry growth, ag and tourism, water, growth of our aging population, brain drain of our youth. How would you fight that and work with legislators on both sides of the aisle? And I think we start with Gary this time.
Thank you, Margaret. You know, there's two things that seem to, that we get stuck on all the time, and that's one, the abortion issue, and the other one's gun ownership. And, you know, the abortion issue's tied up in courts right now, and so we need to not deal with, you know, we can't deal with it right now. So let's move on from that. And gun ownership, nobody's taking anybody guns in the state of Wyoming. If you've lived here any amount of time, that's not happening. So let's move on from that as well. And what we need to focus on in this state is really, really focus on primary job creation, and how do we do that? Number one, you can hardly live here in Laramie and not talk to somebody that wants to move here, but they can't find housing. And so we have to spend a lot of time, if we want jobs and broaden this tax base, we've got to focus on creating housing, adequate housing. I don't like to use the word affordable, because what's affordable to each and every one of us in this room is different. But we need to find adequate housing and build adequate housing in the state, and the state can get behind that and with regulations, working with the cities and counties on how to get affordable housing. We need to focus with our ag community and making sure our ag community's strong and developed and moving forward, and that they get the protection that they need out there. But, and then again, we need to talk about the emergency services and the rural healthcare to make sure that's out there. But we need to move off of things that we're just not going to move the needle on, and move to things that we can move the needle on to make a difference.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah, it could be that the courts will overturn the bills that have been passed by the legislature, and if that happens, this legislature will just go right back at it. So I disagree with Gary completely that this issue isn't important. Women's freedom, women's reproductive rights are important, and I will defend them in the legislature. In regards to, oh, man, I lost my thought. I think that, excuse me, of the other issues that we have to deal with, we were talking about the extreme measures that the legislature has been passing. The only way we're going to stop them from having that happen is to work to defeat the Freedom Caucus members that are the ones behind most of the extreme measures that have been coming out of the legislature. And I hope that we can, as a state, find that compassion and civility that has been eroding over the last several sessions. It's very clear by the rhetoric that comes out of the Freedom Caucus and the extreme right wing that they are not interested in compromise in any way. And I hope that we can find a way through all that, because at the moment, our legislature really feels dysfunctional.
Okay. Okay. I just got this new question that I think can go to everybody. The Secretary of State is concerned about our voting, voting procedures, sorry. Are you concerned, and why? And I'm going to start with Thad.
That's fine. No, I'm not concerned. I think Wyoming with the ID at the ballot is sufficient. I don't know that we have a lot, or there's no implication of election fraud, other than we might have some issues clerically with the students being in town and some of the transient population that we have around here, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's underprotected, and I don't think it's currently an issue that's worth spending a lot of time on. I think it's a key point with kind of a slim minority, but I, again, that comes back to the electronics that are involved, too. And there's been acknowledged issue with the electronics and that kind of thing.
Brian?
I think quite simply, no, I am just not, not concerned. We have secure and professional elections in Albany County and in the state of Wyoming, and I have seen no proof to sort of demonstrate this urgent need to modify everything we do. You know, I think it's always interesting when an elected official is really okay with the results when they win, and then otherwise, they have quite a few concerns about them. So yeah, no concerns here. They should keep doing the great work they're doing in the clerk's office.
Thank you. Mike?
I was in Rock River three weeks, four weeks ago for a county commission forum, and had to listen to a House district candidate really questioning the integrity of our county elections officials. And I ended up cutting him off and saying that our election officials are, you know, Kayla White and Stacy are committed people who really care about the security of our elections. What we need to worry about is the accessible, accessibility of our elections. The Secretary of State has been working to reduce the availability of drop boxes, has been working to reduce the hours of early voting, and these are things that hurt our senior citizens. I've talked to many of them at the door who rely on absentee voting, rely on those drop boxes. And one of the things that I will work on in the legislature is protecting the accessibility of our voting, because our voting is secure. We just need to keep it accessible.
Gary?
First thing we all need to do is thank Kayla White and Stacy Lamb for all their hard work up at the county clerk's office. They do a fabulous job here in the county. At the same time, we need to stay very vigilant at making sure that we do have clean, fair elections. And I'm not in any way saying that we don't here in the county, because we, I believe we do here in the county. But at the same time, if we drop our guard, somebody may, we've seen it around the country, we need to stay vigilant on making sure our elections are fair and clean. And Kayla and Stacy do a fabulous job. We're very fortunate here in the county. But what we need to focus on is making sure that the county clerks have the resources they need to conduct an election. You know, sometimes it feels to me that they're on a shoestring budget getting these things done. We need to make sure that they have the resources that they need to make sure the elections are run smoothly for everybody, and that when people get to the polling place, they can vote in a timely and efficient manner.
Okay. Changing subjects. Is current school funding adequate, and what do you anticipate from the WEA lawsuit that's underway as we speak? And I'm going to start with Gary, and go to Mike, and then if the county commission candidates want to jump in on this, yes, you're free to do that afterwards.
So school funding is one of the big hot buttons in the state right now on who's on first, who's on second, and it's been an ongoing issue for twenty years over at the state, and we need to continue to wrestle with it and tackle that, tackle that problem. And we need to make sure that a student in Albany County, where we don't necessarily have the resource, sources that, say, Campbell County does, or Sweetwater County does, that our students get the same opportunity and chance to be educated with the same amount of resource put behind them that anybody does. But when we're focusing on education, we need to make sure we're focusing on education, which is, you know, make sure our students come out and they have reading, writing, math, sciences, history, the good, bad of history, you know, about Wyoming. Why Wyoming is Wyoming. You know, I think a lot of our issues today resolve around, we don't understand why Wyoming became a state, why Wyoming is what it is. We understand Wyoming history. We understand American history, the good, bad, and ugly of it, so we don't make the bad mistakes again, but we repeat the good things that have happened to us. We focus on the basics of education, that we make sure students have the ability to get, go where they need to go to get the best education, and that they have the support in education they do. Like I say, the battle on the funding is going to be a big one. It's so complex, we've been at it for twenty years, but I can promise you, I'll be a big part of the solution as we get in there and tackle the funding issue. But we need to make sure we focus on the basics of education.
Mike?
Can you repeat the question, just so my answer makes sense?
Is current school funding adequate, and what do you anticipate from the current WEA lawsuit?
I would say barely adequate. Our Albany County Board of Education has done a tremendous job dealing with economic problems they inherited. But the entire, the entire budgeting issue for the public schools is a problem, and it needs to, it needs really close study. And one of the things that I'm really concerned about is the growing use of voucher programs that take money out of the public schools. I am opposed to any voucher program that pulls any money out of the funds that go to public schools. If the legislature wants to increase vouchers for families that want to send their kid to a private religious school, or a charter school, or any kind of other school besides a public school, that money should come from some other fund besides what's providing for our public schools. It's a, it's a real problem. I have been endorsed by the WEA, the Wyoming Education Association, because I am strongly supportive of public education and protecting teachers from legislation that targets them, and, you know, and just in general, support our school, our public schools and teachers. Thank you.
Thad, do you want to talk about it?
I'd love to take a crack at this.
Okay, go ahead.
And I'm actually the son of two educators. My dad was the junior high principal, and my mom was in special ed for years here in Laramie, and they retired both here. They live over by the high school. What concerns me is, and this comes back to the property tax issue, is every time I talk about this, people think that a fifty percent reduction in their property tax is going to affect the county government the most, and that's simply not true. The county can survive on a fifty percent reduction. The hard hit is going to the schools. The teachers in the schools are doing a wonderful job with what they're provided. Where I see a lot of bloat, and I see this through the business, is a lot of schools are, have gotten fat off of heavy funding. The infrastructure's been improved. They just keep writing check after check, and sometimes it's bloated in, we need this service for now, and that service never stops. Nobody ever sunsets the contract, or you see a lot of hundred thousand dollar deals that add up over time. So you're paying companies that aren't necessarily Wyoming-based over and over, and I see this at the county level, too, where people are just essentially extorting somebody because nobody's taking the time to notice. So we just need to make sure that people are held accountable and that the checks and balances are being made.
Brian, do you want to talk?
Yeah, absolutely. I am the child of a para at a school, and I don't know that they would call them lunch ladies anymore, but my mom was a lunch lady when we were kids. I imagine that's probably not the term, but the, and also, you know, I'm the product of Wyoming's public schools. And now, as an adult, plenty of my friends are educators in Albany County. And, you know, I think that I support the WEAs' challenge to school funding. I think it is, you know, I won't weigh in on it beyond that, but I think when your teachers can't afford to buy a home in the community in which they teach, that ought to be all the sign you need, that there is some sort of issue. And I can say for certainty that the friends of mine who are educators, they have a hard time making ends meet in Albany County.
Okay, thank you. This, this next question goes along with that, and so again, doesn't say it's just for the senate candidates, but I will start with you, with you, Mike. Do you support an unlimited number of charter school approvals, or do you support limiting the number of charters that can be approved? And it doesn't say in the state, in an area. It's pretty open-ended.
Real short answer for that, yeah, yes, I would, I would like to see charter schools limited. Anything that a charter school is doing well, we should also be... limited. Anything that a charter school is doing well, we should also be doing in the public schools. I, I, I struggle with the idea that charter schools pull money and students from public school to do something different when we all should be working together, provide the best education possible in our public schools. And I think our teachers do a really good job for that in, in Albany County. Both my grandchildren here in Albany County go to public schools. They have both been in the language immersion, immersion program. And, and I feel like they are really getting the best education possible. And I, I think I would continue to support public schools over charter schools every time.
Okay. Gary?
You know, I'm a product of a, of public schools and I've been, I am a huge supporter of public education. That's what's made America great. That's what's made Wyoming great. You know, I've been a big supporter of Laramie High School and Laramie School District. Served with several of you on the team where we built the new high school and put it together as a group. We got a, a bond issue passed. And then we, on top of that, we went out and raised private funds of over a million dollars to get some enhancements to the school, like buying over a hundred band instruments for the band and, and other things. It was a great partnership of, of, of public money, the city stepping up with the bond, and then private money doing a project together. It was a tremendous example. Which, as far as charter schools, again, I think we meet the child's education where we need to. And if, if a child needs a little bit different education and maybe through a charter school, then let's have a charter school. The, the goal is to educate our children the best way possible so they come out and be a success in the future. And as I say that, I'm a huge supporter of public schools, but I'm more importantly, a huge supporter of children's education. And if we need to do it best and for some reason it's not getting done in the public school, then let's get it done in another fashion to educate that child to the best of our ability as a, as a society.
Okay. Thad, do you want to talk?
I can speak to it. I have two daughters at a charter school.
Oh, okay.
I, I certainly don't think that we need every school to be a charter school, but I do see a need for it, but not to the detriment of the school district itself.
I think I'm going to land somewhere closer to Mike on this issue. I think there is a, you know, I can, I can see the, the reasoning behind, but I think an unlimited amount of, of charter schools could really be pretty detrimental. And, you know, to the, the point of the last question, the more funding you siphon off of the public schools, the, the less likely, likely you are to be able to support those teachers. You know, I think that you pair that with those earlier questions about property tax and, and sort of the realities of property tax in Wyoming. And it starts to look pretty, pretty challenging to, to be an educator in Albany County. And so I, I think that gives me a little bit of pause in this conversation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to go to hopefully a quick question for the Senate candidates on UW funding, since we're on schools. Some primary candidates around the state focused on cutting funding for UW. How would you advocate for the university that is so vitally important to our city and county? Gary, do you want to start?
Well, if anybody knows anything about me, and if you don't, I'll tell you, I'm all in for the University of Wyoming. Period. That, I'm all in for the University of Wyoming. We need to continue the block grant for the University of Wyoming. We don't need to pick it apart because we disagree with one little segment of the university and what the university is doing. Through a robust budgeting process and working with the university, we can, as a, as a legislature, talk about what should be funded and what's not, and have that conversation with the university and decide what's important for the people of Wyoming out there. But it's not the legislature's job to run the University of Wyoming. That's why we have a board of trustees and an administration to run the University of Wyoming. We set the budget through a robust debate and the university is part of the constitution. We need to continue funding. It is why we're here. We need to make the University of Wyoming a much bigger economic driver in this state by supporting it, that we do more research, development, and reaching out throughout our state and, and in particular here in Laramie, to, to grow our economic base to offset some of these taxes. And the University of Wyoming can be a big part of it. I am all in on this university and I'm all in on the block grant for the university.
It was, it was aimed at the, at the Senate candidates. So, but if you want to talk, I'll let you do.
Mike?
Mike.
Okay, yeah. I, I agree with Gary. The legislature needs to quit putting its hand, you know, its thumb in our pie, quit picking ideologically driven issues and using them to harm the university. What they did with the office, the DEI and the Office of, and they're trying to do with the Office of Gender Studies is harming Laramie families. I've talked to a couple of folks who are really upset that they may be forced from Laramie because of some of these programs being cut. I think some are already been, have already been forced away. They need to stop interfering. And, yeah, I think that's, that's the, that's the bottom line for me. And I agree that the, the block grant should have as little, a little adjustment to it from the legislature as possible and let the trustees and the Wyoming legis, Wyoming, the University of Wyoming administration manage the university.
Okay. Okay, this one you can all speak to. On paper, Wyoming has provisions for municipal home rule. Counties have never had this provision. Do counties deserve the right to make governance decisions that have not been defined for them by the legislature? Thad, you get to start.
Great. The look on my face is probably not the best one right now.
[laughing]
So as Gary already elaborated, state, the state dictates what a county commissioner and what the counties can do. It would certainly give a lot more flexibility in quality of life to residents outside the city. It would provide additional protections to citizens outside city limits and unincorporated parts of the county. To that end though, I think we have a lot of residents that actually live outside city limits and don't want those necessary protections. They want to be left alone. They don't want their neighbors so close. They don't want people coming right down the road every time they're nearby. I certainly, it, it would create more government in people's back pockets. And I think the folks outside of city limits that choose to live out there would probably object to it. So I would say no.
Okay. Brian?
Yeah, I, I would support counties having the opportunity to have home rule. I mean, I think government closest to the people governs best. It's, it's always been my belief. It's why I'm running for this office. I think the closer you are to the, you know, the folks you serve, the more well-balanced your decision-making is going to be. And I, I think you run into places where, where there may be gaps in statute that don't, don't dictate exactly how the county government is supposed to work. And certainly Campbell County, Sweetwater County, Teton County, those, those counties are all going to have a different approach to what might work in Albany County. And so I, I think it would be powerful for the, the county to maintain home rule, similar to municipalities. I will say that, you know, that's while allowed, it's often, you know, it's, I, I don't recall there being any challenge to that. It's, it's on paper, of course, as you said, Margaret, but in, in practice, that's a little bit harder. I, I have been at the, the receiving end of a, a preemption bill that you do something based on home rule and then all of a sudden the legislature says no way. And it just sort of defeats that, that home rule bit. But I guess to, in summation, I, I would support counties having the opportunity to, to utilize home rule as well.
Okay. Mike?
Um.
Since the legislature would have to say that they could do this.
Absolutely. And the legislature would, would, would have to take action for that to be, for that to happen. And I, I got to tell you, that was one of the more interesting questions that we've gotten tonight because I hadn't realized that we don't really have that. You know, the city, it doesn't make sense to me that the city of Laramie has home rule, but Albany County itself doesn't have home rule. It just, it doesn't, isn't logical to me. And I, I agree with Brian that the closer to home, you know, a government is, the more responsive it is to its citizens. And I don't think that it would necessarily relate and result in any particular negative type regulations for, for citizens because they're going to be voting on, on what it is that is being considered. And they elect the county commissioners to do what they feel is the right thing to do. And, yeah, so I, in, in first glance, I would say, yes, I'm in favor of home rule for counties.
Okay. Gary?
You know, to be honest, it's a question I haven't thought about. But I can tell you how I would think about it. And that is, I would ask the experts. I'd start with asking our county commissioners what they thought. I would start asking the people in the county that are outside the city limits of what they thought about it and get their opinion. I can tell you, I would lean to the side of less government regulation unless there was a really, somebody had a compelling answer to why we should have additional regulation and oversight, then I wouldn't be for it. Because I believe, you know, the best decisions are made by the individual. But I would research it to come up with an answer. I don't have an answer on a question like that today, but I can tell you, I would ask the experts, ask the people that it would affect, and then make a decision from there.
Okay. Okay, we're going to have to wrap up here in a little bit, but the, the last question I wanted to ask all of you is, and it doesn't say who, who this is to, what is your definition of affordable housing? Or somebody, Brian, I think you said something, used a different term instead of affordable housing. But, so what, what's your definition of affordable housing? And I would expand that to say, what do we need to do to, to get more of that, of whatever that is? Mike, do you want to start with us for this one?
Mine first? Okay. Obviously, that really varies from person to person. I've knocked on a lot of doors in lower income neighborhoods now. And the few folks in those neighborhoods that own their property are struggling to make mortgages. So I don't know that they would consider their own home affordable. A lot of the renters work two or three jobs in order to be able to put food on the table and, you know, afford their rent. You know, I think you can't put a number to it because there is such a significant difference in a one-bedroom apartment and a three-bedroom house. So affordable is very much related to, you know, a person's income level. And I think it's important that we take that into consideration as we, as anyone, whether it's the legislature, the city council, or the county commission, considers the measures that would address affordable housing so that it's done in a way that doesn't harm any particular segment of the, of the population.
Okay. Gary?
You know, I, as I stated earlier, affordable housing's different for all of us. You know, it's how do we have available adequate housing for everybody? And adequate's different, you know, for all of us. So how do we get that housing out there? Is, we need to invest and make sure the state does everything to promote affordable housing. We need to be out reaching out and bring in, supporting our local builders and contractors. But if they are so tied up, when you call in, it's going to be six months before you can get somebody to help you. We need to bring people in to help us do that with, to bring the, the housing in. One thing we can do as a state is invest in housing. You know, I'm not for spending the permanent mineral trust fund or our permanent funds, but we can invest them. Right now, we're investing those funds in New York. We're buying companies through the stock market and things like that. Let's invest in the state of Wyoming. We can invest in real estate developments. Help a, help a developer build their subdivision with a loan that, that we would put in there. And if it takes them five years to sell the lots and get it developed due to regulation, it takes five years. But the state's money can be patient. When that lot sells and the home sells, then the state can be paid back with interest and, and, and have the money. So let's take the money that we have and invest in Wyoming. Let's promote and make it easy for people to come here and help us build housing because we can attract a primary job workforce unless we have housing to, to support those families and support those who are here. Thank you.
Thad?
So this isn't going to be a popular sub, or popular response. I, I think, and what I've heard from talking to people daily almost, is that if you earn a wage in Albany County, you should be able to afford to live and own in Albany County, and that's never going to happen. We have the University of Wyoming. It's, property ownership and property management is not a cottage industry. It's a huge, huge industry in Laramie. We have out-of-state interests. We have global interests coming here and buying up and developing. It is not beneficial for them to try to release land or any development options to local builders that are going to try to do affordable housing. We just don't have it. It's been an industry too long. And at the city level, they've implemented some changes that make it harder to build. It's, it costs more. You want to build in the county, it's a hundred dollar permit. What I would like to see is a staff position at the planning office that actually helps landowners, property owners actually develop. Instead of you go talk to an engineer, you submit the plans, especially with the septic and that kind of thing. We need to ease the burden on people that are either here and want to add on, build, develop. The government's got a, it can't be the hindrance. We have to, with open arms.
Okay. Brian?
You guys got like an hour or two to get into this?
[laughing]
So I, I think-
That's the problem with these questions.
Oh, man, I could talk about it all day. All right. So I think to your question specifically, affordable housing is defined as 30% of your income. But, you know, to some of the other candidates' point, that's, that's not, you know, a set number. And I, I think the term attainable is the, the one that I typically use. Because we are missing, the 2015 housing study, the Thrive Laramie Plan, both indicate that we are missing thousands of units. And, and those units are spread across every single price point. So you, you have as much trouble trying to buy your first home as you do trying to downsize when you, you know, your kids have left and you're, you're looking for a smaller home. That puts constraints on every part of the housing market and makes it more costly to live anywhere. I, I would continue to support the work the Wyoming Business Council is doing with state funding to fund sort of like the trunk infrastructure, making it easier and more cost-effective for developers to, to build. And, and continue working together, county and city, to build these projects. And then I would just push back a little bit on what Mr. Hoff said. I think his information might be outdated. The city has made significant concessions to code, modifications to code, to make building in the city much easier, shrinking lot size, minimum lot size to 2,500 square feet, adding ADUs to every single property in the city of Laramie, and changing funding options so that developers can actually pull some of their money out earlier to continue building houses. So I, I think I'd just encourage him to maybe look up some of those studies and get a little more current on the information.
Okay. Okay, looking at the time, I'm going to ask you one last question. And this is sort of a, you put in at what you want. What specific ideas would you have for changing regulations, adding something, taking something away that would, that would benefit the, the county, the community, either at the county level or at the, at the state level? And I would start with, I'll start with Brian.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think there are, I mean, our current county commission, I think is doing a, a really good job at managing the, the services and the land use in the county. But, you know, there, there are always ways to improve. I think little things like making it easier to, to hear the audio when you're watching a county commission meeting online would, would make it more accessible. And then, you know, as far as more practical things, I think implementing a bunch of the- And then, you know, as far as more practical things, I think implementing a bunch of the, the, continuing to implement the, the requirements from the, the Aqua for Protection Plan. I think that would go a long way to improving the, the reliability of our clean water drinking source. And then I, I think largely, my campaign's built on, on continuing to work together with other local governments. So regardless of what we're working on, I want to make sure that we're all working in the same direction. I just think that is a better use of taxpayer dollars. It allows us a chance to do, to provide the services that, that folks have come to rely on from their local governments, whether that be EMS service into the county, you know, support for the detention center and the sheriff's office. It allows us to do all of those things, but with a much more cost-effective bottom line.
Okay.
Can I get the question one more time?
What specific ideas would you, do you have for changing, I'll say, regulations or offices or employees or whatever that would benefit the community?
So I've already touched on it. I'd like to see the county reduce the burden to anybody trying to develop here, build here, in general, live here. If it's anything that we can do at the courthouse from changing the flow, informing folks coming in with a new title, that they need to go here first, go here second, go pick up the actual document afterwards, just to avoid confusion. I've, I've worked for some counties that have actually had to do renovations, and they actually moved the offices right next, I mean, it was literally a counter like this. So one was here, one was here, and the transaction was so smooth, it was amazing. It's something like that. The, the government shouldn't be the hindrance to a citizen living in their community. And I've already touched on an additional person at the planning office to try, and instead of policing people doing the building and the construction and trying to do the repairs, go out and assist them. It's as simple as that. And something I'd bring to the office, I'm, I'm actually in the community a lot. I talk to a lot of people during the day. So I, I provide not a 30,000-foot looking down overview of the situation. I'm more of a ground-level, actually talk to the people that turn the wrenches and make things work. So that's, that's where my, my emphasis comes in.
Thank you. And so Gary and Mike, do you, what specific ideas would you have for changing how the state deals with, or state statutes that would make, that would benefit the community? Gary?
You bet. You know, the number one thing, go to where I started, is we need to get civility back in the thing where we have robust discussions and we don't end up using words like extremist or far-right, far-left. We have people with ideas that we debate vigorously, but we come up with ideas and solutions. So that's the first thing that, that I'd be on. And I've had tremendous track record in the past doing that, from working in downtown Laramie 30 years ago, when downtown was a dump, and we went out and worked together with the city and, and did a project called Landmark Square, which changed downtown, to working with the schools that we talked about earlier. So we have to work together going forward. Then we need to address this housing issue, because housing is the number one issue. And, and underneath housing is the availability of housing for everybody. Laramie, you talked to, to Brad Enzie at the Chamber, he thinks we need 2,000 housing units in Laramie. And I, and I believe that. So we've got to get housing. Also under housing is a taxation issue that we talked about earlier. We need to solve this taxation issue and make it work for everybody without hurting the cities and the counties and the schools. But at the same time, the city, counties, and schools need to look for, how do we really think out of the box and become more efficient down the road to in delivering what we do? But again, it's back to working together for the betterment of the state of Wyoming and for Albany County.
Okay. Mike?
There are a lot of issues that affect the livability of Laramie, and affordable housing isn't the only one. Early childhood education, preschool, childcare are extremely expensive for young families in, in Laramie and in Albany County. And that's something that the legislature, or at least a committee of the legislature and a couple legislatures, tried to address this past session. And the answer that came out of that committee leadership was that, well, we're not going to, we're not going to do this. We're not even going to let the LSO write a bill about it, because given the makeup of the legislature, they're not going to pass it anyway, so let's not talk about it. That's the kind of thing that our legislature has to change. If they're not willing to talk, if they're not willing to have civil conversations about issues as basic as early child education, we're in trouble. So early childhood education, preschool is one of the issues I really care about, and healthcare. And I'm, I'm going to run out of time, but Gary's idea about taking our, our funds and investing them in Wyoming is really important. And we can do that with early childhood education. We could, we could bring something around. We could produce something similar to the Hathaway Scholarship for young families that can't afford childcare for their kids, or preschool, something like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Your time's up. Sorry, your time's up. Okay. One last thing. 30 seconds. Why should...
30?
30 seconds. You have to be precise. Why should the voters vote for you in this, in this election? And Brian, we're going to start with you.
Sure, thank you. This is a great question. So I, you know, I grew up in northern Wyoming, and I grew up in a house that, that really struggled a lot with poverty. I think in that experience, we, you know, we, we survived with hard work and leaning on our neighbors and, and asking for help when we needed it. And, and from that came, you know, a little bit of hope, a little bit of determination, and I carried that through into business ownership and into starting a family, to be honest with you. And I, I think, I, I will bring that sort of experience. I'll bring my experience as an elected official and a business owner to bear at the county, and I'll be ready to start on day one.
Okay. Dad?
I would bring a common sense approach to the management of the county. Not that the county commission right now is doing anything other than that. It's a difference of keeping politics and political gain out of the system and actually vote and try to benefit the citizens of Albany County. I'd like to take a pragmatic approach. I, I want a practical solution for the problems that are going to face the county, and the things that we're seeing today may not be the things that we're going to see in four years at the end of the term. So you have to have somebody there who can make those critical decisions for the betterment of the county.
Okay. Gary?
You know, I, I was the very first person to file and run for the Senate District 10 race. I was over at the State, Secretary of State's office at eight o'clock in the morning on the first day of filing, because I want to use my expertise to help Laramie and Albany County to the best we can and be as most productive as we can. You know, I have a long history of problem-solving, bringing people together and work together, and that's the number one thing. I've talked about it and talked about it tonight, of bringing people together at the state. So we worked together for the, for Laramie. We need to focus on housing, and the one thing we haven't talked about tonight is agriculture. We really focus on those folks with agriculture. And lastly, again, I'm asking for your vote, and please tell your friends and neighbors, it's really important that they exercise their right to vote and get out and vote. Thank you.
Okay. Mike?
In my working life, I was a small business and businessman in blue-collar trades. I was a cabinet maker, a master electrician, and I'm used to working with a wide variety of people to complete complex projects. And I think that's the type of skill set that is valuable in the legislature. My life story includes so many different elements that make me able to relate to a wide swath of the electorate, and I believe that I am the candidate that would provide the broadest viewpoint to the legislature. And so often, they are focused on, they have a very narrow viewpoint, and a broader viewpoint will result in better bills for the people.
Thank you all. Okay, I'm going to quit now, but our, we have room for a little longer. I hope that you all take an opportunity to come and talk to the candidates individually, or two at a time, or whatever you want to do. I know that you have lots more questions. There was one about ballot initiatives that I didn't get to because it was only for the Senate candidates. So come up and talk to them. They'd love to talk to you. And be sure that you're registered and that you go and vote. Most important. Thanks for coming.